Called a word of the Ironton City Council Meeting of June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. With us for our invocation this evening, we have Reverend Jeff Kermens with City Mission Church. If you would stand for our invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance immediately following.
Our Father, we come to you today seeking your guidance and direction, Father, for our city council. We thank you for their faithfulness and been here and, Father, their concern for this city. And we pray, Father, that you would just direct their hearts and their minds and their thoughts, Father, for the good of all. Or just guide us and direct in everything here tonight and dine.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Kermens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Martha.
Cleary.
Here.
Amy.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Harry.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes from the regular council meeting of June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the Finance Committee meeting of June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have any added additions or omissions? Those minutes will stand as approved. Next, we have audience participation. You would like to address council, please step to the podium, state your name, address, and you will have five minutes to address council.
Good evening. Amanda Cleary, one seven four two North Second Street, Ironton, Ohio. I'm here this evening on behalf of the local nonprofit Third and Center. First, to say thank you to our wonderful city for providing such a beautiful venue and supporting our event, Summer Soul Sis Music and Art Festival, this past Saturday. Specifically, Mike Pemberton and his team, Brett Thomas and his team, and Mr. Jimmy Bishop, and all of the city crew that helped, just tremendous help in making the event success and getting everything set up for us. Last time I was here, I did inform council that we had raised money to purchase new ninety-gallon trashcans, and those have been installed on the riverfront. We placed six of those last Friday, and we will be adding the sponsorship decals within the next couple of weeks. Over the weekend, it was brought to my attention that there will be improvements made to our riverfront. And while I welcome that, I would ask that community members be able to have an input on what happens, on where this tremendous... I was very excited to hear Mr. Elam say that there's been three hundred and ten thousand dollars put towards the riverfront improvement. I would just ask that our community have the opportunity to bring some things to the table as far as ideas, especially as someone who utilizes that riverfront, who plans events on that riverfront. There are many things that could be planned down there if things like our boat dock was properly set up for things like kayak races, or rowing competitions, or just things that could bring revenue, also tourism, but also things that people here already like to enjoy doing. So I'd just ask, before any major changes be made, that that plan be shared with our city so that the members of this community have an opportunity to participate. Another thing from the event that was feedback, people didn't know that we had a riverfront, didn't know that we had a walking path, and if we could collectively provide some kind of marketing plan for that area, that would be phenomenal. Third and Center has been working hard to raise funds to improve the riverfront aesthetically and also environmentally. And we have more plans in the works, but only through open communication with city council and our civic leaders can those plans come to fruition. The other thing that I would ask is that, at last time I was here, I spoke about our city's lack of accessible recreation equipment, specifically handicap swings and playground equipment for our community. That is something that is desperately needed. Third and Center would like to help by placing at least one set of swings at the Ettna Street Park to get us started until we can fundraise properly for an entire set of equipment or raise some grants. We would also need to do some curb adjustments there to make the facility accessible. And Third and Center would like to ask that the city council pledge to match, or the city government, I should say, pledge to match dollar-for-dollar anything that we can raise. Our goal for this project is five thousand dollars, and that would get us the inclusive swing set with the swings and allow for the concrete on the curb to be adjusted, so. And that is everything I had, so thank you.
I appreciate all the effort you guys put in there. It looked like a very good time, and everybody enjoyed it. We'll have a rec meeting here soon, I would say, or in the very near future regarding some of that stuff, especially with funding, so I can't go, you know, say we'll match it. I wouldn't see that would be a problem, but we'd have to go through a rec meeting first and then through finance and everything like that, so.
And again, we're happy to help spread the word about how important and vital the rec levy is
Yeah.
and getting that passed, but we need to work together to make sure that that can happen, and we need to start now.
Yep. So we will definitely, definitely reach out once we, once we get... Well, this legislation has passed tonight, so can't really comment anything further than what's going to happen here in the next probably twenty minutes. After that, we'll reach out and try to get a game plan together. How's that sound?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, one thing, I was talking to the gentleman that helped fabricate the stage. I guess he was a worker, like?
Yes.
A welder, and I love the fact that you worked specifically with people that are working in vocational schools to help teach kids, train, you know, so that stage, as awesome as it was, you know, was in some small part, large part, built through the effort of welding students, so I can mention that to all that.
Good. Thank you very much. Mayor, do we have invited guests here tonight? Who we got? Kevin?
Chris, can we hear that?
Yes, sir. Mike?
Yeah, I have three things to bring to the attention. First, thank you, Mayor, on getting the flood wall cut down the north end. A lot of folks for helping about that, and we look forward to the alley and the ditch line being fixed. But thank you, that looks, it looks great. Ms. Cleary, and the Summer Souls Sis activity was fantastic. I attended that, and it was very well organized and put on. And I just want to throw out all the kudos to the Third and Center organization for doing that. Keep up your good work. It's very encouraging to me and to everyone, I think. Finally, part of that was, there was an issue with handicap accessibility. I think we probably all know that the railroad crossing is not very well done. And just in the time I was there, there were five handicap folks in scooters or wheelchairs, some of which had to be carried across that. And I know that's the Norfolk Southern Railway's issue, but, you know, I think our city needs to reach out to them and say, "Look, this is American for Disabilities Act violation. If there's an injury, you're going to get sued." And, I mean, gosh, just us walking across that railroad path, we might turn the fall into a hole. It's terrible down there. And I think we need to reach out to see if they can construct that. I've looked, since that weekend, I've looked at many, many railroad crossings going across roads. And there's always a bump, but they're pretty smooth. If they just pay attention to detail, they can make that accessible.
Mike, they're currently doing work to that right now.
Yeah.
They've got, so I think that should...
Yeah. I hope that they're replacing ties, but I don't think they're doing any...
Well, they said what they, what their communications were, that it's going to be back better than it was before, so.
I was looking forward to that.
They're, they are, they've got it closed down right now. I didn't know if you saw when you drove by or not, but.
I saw it was closed. I just thought it was a tire replacement. Anyway, I wanted to mention that, so thank you all.
We've got Kevin Wood with IBI for our quarterly update.
Good evening, everybody.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Yeah, just to run through a list of updates here. Top of the list is the sewer consent decree. We're continuing to work with the mayor and staff and the Ohio and USCPA. We have a call Monday to respond to some technical questions from their team, so we were prepared for that call Monday afternoon. So the ongoing effort, for those of you who are newer, or those of you who have been here for a while, is to, working with the mayor and the legal, the environmental attorney, is to work with USCPA to have them revise the consent decree. And that's going well, I think, from all of our conversations, but we're just working through the ropes on that, yeah.
Is that legal, council still being okay with that?
Next on my list is the Fifth Street Bridge Project is ongoing. There's not much new to report on that, really. It's still slated for construction start in August of twenty-three and completion in March of twenty-four. Anyone have any questions on that in particular, or the consent decree? I guess I should ask that question. Next is the Third Street, Street Improvement and Waterline Project. We're still, plans are completed, the waterline plans are completed by EPA. We're still just in a holding pattern, waiting to hopefully get positive news from the Economic Development Administration on a grant. It's nearly a two-point-one million dollar grant on that project, so that could be, could free up a lot of both street money and eliminate a potential loan or this sizable, greatly decrease a loan through EPA for the waterline component. So we're holding off on bidding that project until we get final word on that grant. We've gotten encouraging emails and calls, but nothing's done until it's done, so we're still waiting. And we have no clue as to when we'll hear something. They won't tell us, so. The State Route ninety-three roundabouts, Stage Two plans were submitted to EPA, to ODOT just this week. They will, and we're getting copies of plans to city staff for review, and we'll ask for any reviews from the city. ODOT will offer review comments, and then final plans will be submitted this fall. And construction is still slated for spring of twenty-three with completion in spring of twenty-four on that project. Next is the Pine Street and First Street Improvement Project. If you remember, that is the project that the city received a grant, a little over two-hundred-and-four-thousand-dollar Appalachian Regional Commission grant toward that project. Local out-of-pocket funds is about eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Shelley, Across the River, was the low bidder on that project. The city has signed contracts and notice of award. Those documents have been sent to Shelley to sign, and I've asked them what their schedule will be for that, and have not heard back, but I'm hopeful that before too long, after signing the contract documents, they'll be able to get started on that construction. And basically, that is Pine Street between Third and First, and First Street from Pine South to AHS. Next, just to let council know, we submitted, if you recall, there was a big effort months ago to do income surveys on the entire south end, basically from Center Street South. And that was successful due to a lot of legwork of people in this room and others to get that done. So that allows you to apply for certain CD, Community Development Block grants. We have, are submitting, actually just this week, a grant for various storm and sanitary improvements in that area. Kind of, the city has a long list based on the study that we did, but we worked with Dennis, Dennis Gumbert, Mike Pemberton, to kind of come up with a priority list of projects, totaling about eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. The grant request is five-hundred thousand dollars. And then the city could, if you choose, take an EPA loan for the remaining three-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand approximately. So that grant request is going in this week. They say they will notify award recipients within a couple of months. I'll believe that when I see it, but we'll obviously be watching that closely. So hopefully, before too long, we'll know if that's successful. We're continuing to work with Ralph and his team to kind of provide support as needed on the sports park project. We are in design on the Bathom Lane and Orchard, Bathom Lane Storm Pump Station and this Orchard Sanitary Lift Station project. Plans were submitted on the Bathom Lane portion this week for review. And we've, I've been working with the mayor on various street paving projects. The mayor has mentioned, as every mayor mentions to me, how can we get funds for paving? Mayor Cramblett set up a couple calls and meetings with Kiowa, and they've committed to fund some certain streets to be paved in the city. They will only pave streets that are either state or federal classified streets. And so we've carved out a total project cost of around three-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Any of these streets that you pave with these dollars, you have to either construct or repair all of the crossings so that they are ADA compliant. So we have built that into this cost as well. They have agreed to fund at one-hundred percent the design and technical specification portion of this, which is forty-four thousand and eighty dollars. The bulk of the cost, they have committed to fund at eighty percent grant with a twenty percent match, with the note that there is a possibility they may fund that at a hundred percent grant. So this could potentially be a hundred percent grant project, but as of right now, they tell us that the design is a hundred percent, the construction is eighty percent. So if they do only fund the construction at eighty percent, the city would need to fund fifty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fourteen dollars.
Craig?
Yes.
Is that for the, is that work completely milled and redone?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's to, a mill and, yeah, they mill an inch and a half, and they repave an inch and a half, and then do all the work on the handicap ramps, the ADA crossings, yeah.
So that forty-four thousand for the planning, that, that was, that's already taken out of the three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, correct?
It's part of the three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand.
Right.
So that leaves, the construction portion is estimated at two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, five-seventy.
Okay, so that's where we came up with fifty-eight. So we, if, if it's an eighty-twenty match, we would need to...
Yeah, so I calculated that wrong. So your twenty percent match would be actually a little less. It'd be twenty percent of the two-ninety-three, so about...
It was fifty-eight.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I was saying, because I did the whole three-thirty-six and...
Yeah, so Salim, Salim at Kiowa told us that if, depending on how quickly the design can get done, because as of right now, the design, their design funds are available July one, which is their two thousand and twenty-three calendar year. Is that when that starts? The construction dollars are available next calendar year, which is July of twenty-three. However, he said if you get design completed in a timely fashion, they may be able to make the construction dollars available this year. So the mayor and I discussed this, and we're waiting on a response from ODOT, but we have been told that the city will need to advertise for qualifications to hire an engineer to design this. They can't just use us as your city engineer. So the city will need to go through that process to bring an engineer on board, then get the plans and things together, and then bid it out for construction. But the mayor has asked me to work with him, and I think he intends to go ahead and start advertising, which I think you should, I don't want to speak for you, mayor, but, to hire a consultant to get them on board so that you can, you know, get your specs and things together, because I would imagine this, you know, it would be preferable to get construction done this year.
This is extremely time-sensitive, correct?
Yeah.
Do we need, do we need legislation for you to...
And since you're on this one, I was going to present, this is pretty much all I had for this evening, that's all I had to jump in with here. We've, knowing what all of our, all money is tied up from the bridge and street improvement bonds we took out, we have put together a phase one, another paving project that we would like to, I was going to ask if we could call special meeting sometime next week to authorize the professional services contract, which would be a separate one from this one, to begin the ball rolling on that.
Can, can you send me either tonight or tomorrow, and I can get, hopefully get that to our solicitors ASAP? Or unless you want to submit it, do you guys want to submit it?
It'll be an engineering estimate, that it's going to be revised by Kevin. I have packets to share with you about what the scope is of this work and what the cost estimates are. These are, we have two essential paving projects. We can go ahead and comfortably do this one, and then, let's say, you know, when the EDA grant, things like that come around, we can do phase two, which we're anticipating next year. But if that EDA grant comes in next week, we're asking you to do the same thing again for phase two paving, try to get it all done this year.
When do you need a special meeting?
Next week, great. That way, we can go ahead and allow them to start the design. This one we can do, there's no oversight, really, because it's...
You don't have to advertise, because it's your, your money.
And that way, they can advertise it for the three weeks. We can hopefully, you know, get a bid before the August eleventh council meeting. That way, we can go ahead and accept a contract and get this paid before the end of the fall.
What, how long would it take you guys to get that authorization? Monday or Tuesday, good for anybody? Everybody? We need six here. Can you attend online? Jacob, can you set it up to where he can get online?
Yeah.
Well, can you get that to him tomorrow?
Yeah, I can get you a proposal tomorrow, so you have the exact figure.
And then we'll have it Monday evening. Is that, is that fine with you guys, solicitors?
Have a meeting Monday?
Yeah, a special meeting Monday?
You said you would, I could do Monday, you can't be here. I can do Monday in person.
Nate, you can't be here?
I'm sorry, I'm not available next week. I'm calling, uh...
You can call in?
Yeah.
All right. Can you call in? Can we have six here? Jacob, Bob, can you guys do it? Everybody? Good Monday?
What time?
Okay, so what time's good for everybody? We'll go ahead and call it right now. Six o'clock? Everybody good with that? All right, so we're going to go ahead and officially call a special meeting regarding authorization for the mayor to enter...
Professional services contract for design on paving project.
Chris? Yeah.
Do we need to be a finance, have anything for that?
I don't think we'd need a finance to actually authorize him to enter it. Now, to accept it, we'd probably need finance, but... Monday, June twenty-seventh? Six P M. Regarding authorizing mayor...
Yep.
To enter... What'd you say? Special service?
Professional services contract for design of paving project. And then, what would we call the other one? Another, it's a separate one, but the same thing, essentially.
Do you want to call the first one the Kiowa-funded?
We have to put that one out for bid.
Up for calls, yeah. Do you want to call this Phase One paving, or I don't know what you want to call it, because it's very strange.
The Owl private one, the one we're doing in Kiowa.
Regarding, okay.
I made a bid, Owl.
Special, special meeting, June twenty-seventh at six P M. in Council Chambers regarding the authorization of the mayor to enter professional services contract for first-phase street design project. Does everybody get that? Everybody good with that? Okay, that's what we'll send out. I will send out an email to the trip. Do you need it, or do you have it now? Mr. Schaefer?
Send it to me to make, make sure I get it back.
Special, I'm calling a special meeting, June twenty-seventh at six P M. in Council Chambers regarding authorizing the mayor to enter professional services contract for first, what did I say?
Phase one?
First phase of...
Paving project.
Paving project design. Street paving project design. Everybody get on that? All right, I wanted to get that before, before we went on. Okay, so if that's time-sensitive, then that's a lot of money to leave sitting out there.
And then also authorizing the mayor to advertise for qualifications for, I have the street paving project.
And authorizing... Authorizing mayor to... Authorizing mayor to bid, or-
To advertise.
To advertise.
For bid.
Well, for qualifications.
Qualifications, for the design of the Kiowa street paving project.
For qualifications. Authorizing mayor to advertise for bid for qualifications for-
The design of the Kiowa street paving-
For design for Kiowa paving, street paving project.
And the length of for bid, two words, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's advertised for qualifications, not advertised for bid for qualification, yeah.
So the second one, Mr. Schaefer, authorizing mayor to advertise for qualifications for design for Kiowa street paving project.
Is that the same meeting?
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be, that's the two, that's, that's the two things that'll be on the agenda, nothing else.
I'll put it in the calendar tonight.
Thanks very much. Sorry, Mr. Wood.
And then just to wrap up, just to let everyone know, and I may have mentioned this last time I was here, in March, we submitted nominations to EPA, their annual water nominations for the South Third Street project, for North Third Street water line, and then for, to replace the Tenth Street water line. And in May, we submitted an Appalachian Regional Commission grant preliminary application for work on the headworks of the wastewater plant, to make sure that we have a project in, in the queue for that program. Again, we submitted the, to ODNR, working with Ralph and the mayor on Vernon Street and the Gateway Trail projects, and they take, well, last time took a year for them to determine which ones they were gonna fund, so we won't hear anything anytime soon on that. And then lastly, the, of course, the governor's five hundred million of ARPA funds for the area, working with the mayor and with Ralph to make sure Ironton gets as much of that money as, as possible. So that's all I had, unless you have any questions.
Everybody, is that good?
Thanks.
And I, I do, you have one? Pine Street and the First Street Improvement, when, when, when did you say the stop date on that was?
The city has signed the contracts, they have been sent to Shelley today to sign.
Okay.
So they gotta sign them, get them back, and then they, I've asked them for their schedule.
Okay.
So, you know, once everything's entered contractually, it's a matter of them, per the contract specifications, they're supposed to start work within thirty days. I'm just waiting to hear what their schedule is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last, thank you, Mr. Wood. Appreciate it. Mayor?
I need an executive session to discuss real estate with Ralph Klein, Bill Degas, city solicitor, finance director, and counsel.
Craig, you got that? Are you gonna call that? Okay. Executive session with Ralph Klein. Who else? Mayor?
Bill Degas, city solicitor, finance director, and counsel.
Solicitor. Did you get that all right? Okay. You got all that? Huh? No action to follow? No action to follow. Okay. Any other audience participation before we move on? Mr. Schaefer?
Mark Schaefer, Greenup. Something entirely dumb, but if you guys happen to have a pool skimmer somewhere, where I'm next to Rotary Fountain, stuff gets in there all the time, trash blows in, leaves blow in, I'm out there, I'd be happy to just scoop it and toss it in the trash can right there, so.
Good deal. Thank you for that. I'm sure we can get you a skimmer.
Okay, well-
Put you, put you to work.
I'm not putting my hands in the water, so, okay, that was it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think we just had a question about the timeline for Riverfront project, like when was that gonna be started? Is there an estimated time for completion?
We're working with a consultant right now. We originally hoped to have something in by the fall, but, you know, building materials and things like that, I don't know if they'll have enough, you know, in a, in a place.
All right, moving on to communications. Oh, yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mark Ratliff, and I own property up here next to Dog Pound, and the county commissioner's gonna buy it, been, gonna buy it for a while. Deena Holliday called me today, and Dog Pound is partly on my property. It's the reason they're gonna buy it. The driveway, the fence, they wouldn't be able to get in there if he'd moved the fence. And she said that the city owned the Dog Pound, so.
The city owns the Dog Pound?
Yeah. She, they got a ninety-nine-year lease with the city.
I, I, I got that from my assistant about four thirty, so I didn't have a chance to return call, because I haven't even investigated it. But I did see where you're talking about, like where your property line is and how they ran that because of gravel.
Yeah, the, the whole driveway's on my property. They even, the dumpster inside, about two foot-
I saw a line.
Yeah, it's shown, I've seen that too. But when Nate surveyed it, and then that guy with mute lumbar, theraics, came down from Columbus, surveyed it, the stakes is on the other side of the driveway.
And you're wanting, from what I relate to, maybe to what your property line, to be clear of that.
Well, yeah, but there's gonna be a problem, because you guys ain't gonna be able to get in there.
I'll, I'll give you a call more when I can get some more of my head around it. I, like I said, I got like two hours, yeah.
Okay. Appreciate it, thank you. Is the, is the issue that they built a gravel driveway on your property?
Uh, plus their fence and their dumpster and all that, it's on there. I mean, they, they can even get in there. Whoever did it years ago, and I've had two contracts with county commissioners, gonna buy it, and then they never have, you know, they've always had-
Right.
-kicked things canned down the road for the last fifteen years. And then Deena finally got on it. Freddie Hayes been telling me for years, they're gonna take it, they're gonna take it. And then Deena Holliday, she got, you know, Freddie talked to her and, for the last year and a half, and then she called me today, said, we got a problem, the city owns that property, we got leased.
I'll, I will work with the mayor. Does he have your contact information?
Yes, I left it at the office.
I have to do a little bit of research. I don't, that's a little bit, sounds like it's a, it's a little bit of a property line issue and surveying and kind of legal issue also, so if the mayor needs my help with any, anything on that, we'll get back with you. I'm, I'd really, I'd have to look at it and everything else. I don't, I can't tell you-
I can show you the property line, and the dumpster's sitting on top of one of the stakes. We had to wait till it's open, put the stakes in when I bought the property.
Yeah, I'd hate to tell you something without getting legal opinions and, you know, getting everybody looking at some maps and everything, so we will definitely, definitely look into it, get back with you, hopefully, hopefully sometime tomorrow.
Okay. Matt, you're looking younger instead of older.
Good thing, too.
Thank you, Mr. Relge. Any other audience participation? Good, all right. Moving on to communications. There are none. Reports, there are none. Moving on to ordinances. Marta, would you please give ordinance twenty-two thirty, first reading?
Amending the permanent budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for fiscal year December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob?
I have a motion to suspend the rules to give twenty-two thirty, second and third reading by title only.
Jacob?
I'll second by motion.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to suspend the rules. Roll call, please, Marta.
Larry.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-two thirty. Would you please give ordinance twenty-two thirty, second and third reading by title only?
Amending the permanent budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for fiscal year December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and declaring an emergency second reading. Amending the permanent budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for fiscal year December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and declaring an emergency third reading.
Bob?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two thirty.
Jacob, Jacob has the end. Motion by Bob, second by Jacob. Roll call, please, Marta.
Larry.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two thirty has been adopted. Marta, would you please give amended ordinance twenty-two twenty-eight, third reading?
Establishing consumer price index increase on an annual basis for all city usage rates, fees, and permit charges, third reading.
Nate?
I have a motion to adopt amended ordinance twenty-two twenty-eight.
Craig? I have a motion by Nate and a second by Craig to adopt ordinance, amended ordinance twenty-two twenty-eight. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Aye.
Amy.
No.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Amended ordinance twenty-two twenty-eight has been adopted. Moving on to resolutions. We have two resolutions regarding technique, the recreation levy. Marta, would you please give resolution twenty-two thirty-one reading?
Requesting the county auditor to certify the estimated property tax revenue for renewal recreation levy and declaring an emergency.
Craig?
Motion to pass resolution twenty-two thirty.
Chris? Make note of that. I have a motion by Craig and a second by Chris to pass twenty-two thirty-one. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two thirty-one has passed. Moving on to resolution twenty-two thirty-two.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We need to amend the resolution number twenty-two, I'm sorry, that twenty-two thirty-two before you give the first reading. On the first page, there's a mistake there where it says that the tax year twenty twenty-two should have been twenty twenty-one. Then the last sentence on that same paragraph is, it says twenty twenty-seven, it should read twenty twenty-six.
This is the new one?
There.
I fixed that. That's the, that's the- I have a motion to amend. Second by Craig. Roll call, please. Sorry, I went too fast on you.
Larry.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two thirty-two has been amended. And, does, do you have the title up there on that one? Can she just read the regular, can she? Okay. Marta, would you please give amended resolution twenty-two thirty-two reading?
Resolution of necessity providing for the renewal of an existing tax levy in excess of the ten mill limitations for recreational purposes pursuant to Ohio revise cutting sections five seven oh five point one nine eight, five seven zero five point one two, and seven five five point one eight.
Craig?
Question to pass resolution, amended resolution twenty-two thirty-two.
Bob?
Second motion to pass twenty-two thirty-two.
Jacob?
I just want to make mention that amended resolution twenty-two thirty-two received recommend-
Favorable recommendation. Good deal. I have a motion by Craig and a second by Bob to pass resolution twenty-two thirty-two. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution, amended resolution twenty-two thirty-two has passed. Chris? Nate?
No, I just want to make mention that that was for a renewal only.
Renewal, key words.
For individuals watching on our, on city council. That is renewal only for the November general election.
It is.
No additional.
Nothing additional. It's, it's not a, what was that one, Craig?
I would like to, uh, make, file, make part of the minutes the financial maintenance twenty-two.
Jacob, motion by Craig and a second by Jacob to make part of the minutes the May financials. Roll call, please.
Larry.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Craig?
Just a quick question for John. John, do you have a cost estimate for the codes for service office supplier regarding the flood pumps at Station One?
Thank you for asking that. I went and visited and I saw the pump yesterday, and there were three options given, one of them to repair, one of them to fix the upper and lower housing, and the third one for the complete pump replacement. The company that built the pump, that pump is eighty-one years old. I looked at the schematics on it, they are out of business. They will be providing an estimate that I will be able to submit to you, and hopefully the mayor will allow Mike Pemberton to come to the next meeting to explain it on a technical level. Those estimates will be distributed at council meeting, first one in July.
Okay. I know this is super time sensitive, because when you talk about the flood pump stations, those can only be, those can only be worked on in certain, like, months, August, September, so, I mean, we're, we're approaching that quickly, and so, I mean, this is, while I know that this is a, a last minute thing, you got handed and we got handed, we, when we get that information, we need to act quickly, because if they're gonna do those repairs, that, when that short window for repairs of flood pump stations is coming soon.
I concur.
Nate?
Just to piggyback on that, John, and do you know if Mike and Flood Fund, Flood Improvement Fund, Fund Nine, if the capital improvements line on that has been earmarked for anything yet this year? Could those funds be used for that, or is it-
That is what those funds were set aside for.
For that?
Was for flood pump fixing.
Okay. I guess my, my question follow-up to that, if it's gonna be larger than that capital improvement line, if it would require financing of that, getting that lined up also.
I think that lines should incur the costs.
Okay.
And to be real honest with you, I think that it's going to be anywhere from twenty thousand to two hundred thousand. So, and I know that that's big. The, the way that they had that is, hopefully what they can do is weld this back together, that they're going to make that assessment, make that determination. That is the number one flood pump, but Mike's new flood control panel, he could, instead of engaging this one as the number one to kick in, he can engage number four to kick in first. So where this one has always been the front line that got beat up the worst, this one could be moved to the end of the line, which would have the least amount of use.
Okay. Craig?
This is why, I know that's why we established that fund, is for things like this, because we know as far as the age of those pumps, and this is exactly why, in my opinion, we established this fund. So I just want to make sure that that was sufficiently funded, in your opinion, estimate, without having to finance.
It is right now, per my initial conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Craig?
Completely agree with everything Nate has said regarding the establishment of that fund for a specific purpose. And with that thought in mind, we've taken the approach with, with other things throughout our city when it comes to infrastructure. We don't want, we don't want to pave a road without fixing the stuff underneath it first. I, I think we should take the same approach, and while you've given us some, some Band-Aids, I don't want to do Band-Aids. I want to- I want to, I want to know what it costs to replace that pump, and if we have the, if we have the, those funds available, let's replace the pump. Let's, let's fix it all in one shot, and if Mike wants to, if Mike wants to push the, the work on another pump, fine, but we know we've got brand new ones sitting there, is my thinking, so. I, I appreciate you listening to fix one, two, three, but skip on down to three as far as I'm concerned and replace that pump.
And perhaps Charlie from Service Pump could come and discuss the, the pump better. I, I mean, I looked at it, it looked like the Liberty Bell to me, and I don't know beans from apple butter about this stuff. So, I was just like, you're the expert on it, you tell us what to do. So hopefully he'd be able to come in also.
I, that's, that was my thinking, is sometimes, I mean, this thing's lasted 81 years, obviously it was well made. I don't know that we could, I don't know if they're producing this type of equipment that's going to hold up like some of this equipment. I mean, it's been around this many years for a reason, and I'm not saying let's put a Band-Aid on it, but if this is better material or, or better made than, you know, current one, let's do the maximum and keep the. I don't know, there's got to be some kind of in-between maybe, because I know a lot of that older equipment, it's, it's just so well made. John?
As a gentleman, as the gentleman that does this every day, that's who I'm going to look at. I mean, that's, these were the three parts that I had dealt to make. There, there might be two more, so he's going to, he's going to be the expert on this, where I was the layman that looked at it and said, well, what about, what about, what about? Just so I could type that.
Chris?
I think I kind of agree with Craig on this, mostly, to be conservative on our spending, certainly that's what we need to do, but the, the key thing that I picked up from John is the company's not in business anymore, so they can't even provide us actual replacement parts. You know, it's a matter of trying to weld something back together that was created 10 years ago. I'd like, I guess, I don't like the idea of $200,000 spending, but $200,000 saves us in the next 20 years, 30 years, 40 years.
Hopefully 81 years.
81 years, 70 years, 100 years, yeah.
Mike?
John or, or mayor, do you know if the other three pumps have been inspected or conditionary?
This is the first pump that has been pulled.
Are the other, do you know if the others are also 81 years old?
Majority of our structure and flood pump stations are.
I, I think they are, I think they're all around the same generation.
But if this one kicks on first every time over the last 81 years, it's endured a lot of stress that the others have.
Some of them, they've been alternated to, to that pump. You go inside one of those stations, it looks like you're in a time warp because it still looks brand new, 40 years, whatever they've put there.
Craig?
One of the reasons why we established that, that flood fund was because Mike had come in and told us basically that the parts that they, that they need don't exist, and so they have to find municipalities that, that are like Ironton that have extra parts and buy them or go on eBay and buy them or retrofit them by something that, that isn't unique to that manufacturer because that manufacturer doesn't exist, so, so, I mean, we, we solve this kind of, because those, those parts don't exist anymore.
My ass? Craig?
Motion to add an executive session to discuss real estate with Ralph Klein, Bildegas, John Eagle, and county solicitor with no action to follow.
That wasn't my sign.
I had the, about a week or so. I spent a week in Greenville, North Carolina, and double six times I was there. One, I guess the most important thing, I received a call from a resident of Ironton, lifelong resident of Ironton, and she preferred to remain in Allen's, and she lives on 700 block, Southeast Street, between Quincy and Jefferson, and there are several properties there that are vacated in whatever position they need, and the grass and the condition of those properties is causing issues for the other residents that live on or around that block, including concrete grass and burn, so if we can just. I would, I'd say address.
It's in between, it's on Eighth Street?
Two or three, and I'll get you the specific addresses, I, I jumped the information down, but it's on 700.
Depot, 700, is that Depot Square back in there?
Eighth Street. Eighth Street, that one, it's, it's the bottom.
Okay, I got you.
Between, actually, I'm sorry, between Madison and Quincy, but I'll get you those addresses, mayor.
I can just, uh, check it out.
So that was the first thing. The other thing that happened while I was there at the hotel was pretty unique. Everything was done by QR code, and so, second or third day that I was QRing, whatever it is I was doing in the hotel, I got to thinking, how could Ironton utilize technology of the QR code? The very first thing that came to mind was this, being at the bottom of our utility bill, we put a QR code, tell people, you know, hey, scan this QR code, you get a link, and this is way technical, anything that I can put together, another startup, people can go, send you to a link where you can see how to make it. Then, of course, that led me to thinking, what else can be done with QR code, a new utility bill, you know, different things that we could, I know there's printing costs associated with making, you know, adding QR codes onto those. Anybody that's not familiar with QR code, it's that wacky little, it's like a maze kind of thing, you just scan it with a camera on your phone. But I just thought, if this hotel can be that efficient by QRing, what could we take away from that as a city to help out efficiency? Pay the bill, watch the city, use whatever it is.
If it's regarding the, Brett would need to be involved in this conversation truthfully.
And what I thought of when John was talking earlier, maybe it's something that could be implemented as a part of the smart grid software, maybe?
I, I don't know. Are you saying for like this meeting link and for paying your bill?
Or anything, I mean, just anything that's city related.
Yeah, it's just a matter of having a generator, a QR code generator, and plug it in, the link to that, we could do that.
Can the printing company print that on?
Those would be able to see if there's a charge or anything, or print or whatever.
You good? Craig?
By the way, I, I don't know if you could hear last time you did virtual right, Ms. Cleary was talking about updating the barrels on the flood walls and including QR codes. She had mentioned.
Yeah, I'm motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate with Ralph Klein, Bildegas, John Eagle, and the solicitor with no action to follow.
Mike? Motion by Craig, second by Mike. Roll call please.
Cleary. Amy.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. We are now entering executive session. Have a good evening.